Good evening, everyone. Evening, everyone. It's Thursday, January 7, 2016. I'm calling the meeting to order. Our colleague will be joining us momentarily, I'm sure. Prelimarily, we'll approve minutes of July 2 and December 3, 2015, as written.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of July 2, 2015.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of December 3, 2015.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Next matter on the agenda is public hearing on the request of the Hingham Sewer Commission. Gentlemen, would you step up? We will shortly, sir. Stand by.
Thanks for having me. Hingham Sewer Department is hereby requesting a grant of location for a 1-1/2-inch low-pressure sewer main extending from clean-out manhole 1147 on Pine Street, southwesterly 260 feet more or less between the existing sidewalk and the edge of the town layout on Hull Street. The extension is for the purpose of connecting number 94 Hull Street to the existing system.
Anything you want to add beyond that?
Just very briefly. It was part of the Weir River Sewer District Phase 2. They've paid for capacity there. They're in the system, and we just have to extend out to them a little bit. Can I make a little reach out?
Okay. Questions from my colleagues?
I noticed that in the materials we received that you had done the reaching out to neighbors and to abutters. Were there any citizens or people who contacted the department with any concerns?
No, the extension only goes by one house. They had nothing to say, but everyone else is pretty much either on or not going to be on.
Thank you.
Is this going to be work that's done now, before the winter season?
I think so. Where it's off the main road, we're going to finish this up as soon as we can, providing the weather allows us.
Okay. Questions from the audience? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion. Mary, would you be so kind?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve the request of the Hingham Sewer Commission to install and maintain approximately 260 feet of 1-1/2-inch low-pressure sewer main in Hull Street. This new sewer main will originate from an existing sewer manhole at the intersection with Pine Street and continue in a southerly direction in the backside of the sidewalk to completion at house number 94 Hull Street. This approval is subject to the stipulation of the Department of Public Works, including letter dated December 22, 2015.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thanks very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. We will entertain questions from the public, but I'd like to get into this executive session issue right away, only because we have our town lawyer hearings on the clock. So we'll enter into an executive session to consider discipline or dismissal of or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff, member, individual. Board will reconvene in open session, roll call, vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. I will recuse myself from this matter, as I believe it involves Mr. Phillips. So we're going to take a short break. My colleagues will go into executive session, and I'll hang out here with you guys.
We do expect to return by 7:30.
We will be returning shortly, hopefully no later than 7:30. Good luck, folks.
Okay.
Good luck. And we're back in session again because the town lawyer is here and on the clock. We're going to do the vote on the hearing officer, and then we'll move on to the other business. He's here. He's in the building. I'll just step aside. You two can have that discussion as well.
They're coming right over.
So Ted, maybe just as a way to start and for the benefit of the audience, if you could just explain, and again, just the hearing officer process without speaking to any of the specifics of any activities, but just the process itself.
I'm going to have counsel come in here and do that, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Kevin, you want to come in here and walk the board through the hearing process, just so?
Thank you.
Create another conduit. Generally, when, as you know, you indicated the hearing officer on another matter, I usually refer to counsel to find and locate the appropriate hearing officer for the case.
Certainly, if it pleases the board, just to give you a brief overview of the process. I'm sorry. My name is Kevin Feely from the law firm Feely &amp; Brown. What we would, what we have suggested, what the chief has requested, is that the board consider the appointment, the authorization to appoint an independent hearing officer for the purpose of hearing the discipline case that is pending. And what we would, what that independent hearing officer would do, based on the board's direction, would be to make findings of fact based on evidence presented to the hearing officer and issue a recommended decision, only if that's requested by the board. If not, the report would just be findings of fact to the board. Once that report is presented to the board, that would be an executive session, the board would have basically seven days after receipt of the report to meet and consider it, and either at that meeting or at its next meeting, to act upon the report. It is a fairly tight timeframe once you get the report. But again, with the, if you needed more time, with the assent of all parties, you could have more time after that seven-day period elapses, if you thought you needed more time to consider it. The statute I'm talking about is Chapter 31, Section 41 of the General Laws, which is the civil service law. That lays out the, basically, the due process that is afforded to all civil service employees. So if the board was so inclined, typically how it would work, process-wise, is working with the chief, a letter of charges, specifications to be considered at that hearing would be drafted. We would make a recommendation as to the, a hearing officer who, based on the nature of this case and that person's expertise, would be fit to hear this type of a case. And we would come back to the board at its next meeting, if that was what the board so wished, and present that letter and recommendation on a hearing officer for the board's consideration. Since that would have certain specifics dealing with this personnel matter, that would be done in executive session at this point. And then that, you know, that's how the process would work. We would then schedule the hearing and move forward. Any questions?
This is the exact same process, Ted, as the board took, the step that the board took a few weeks ago.
Correct.
Within other employees.
Correct.
Kevin, is there anything in the statute that dictates who makes the recommendations to us?
The recommendations, Paul, I'm sorry, I'm not sure. Which recommendations?
Well, there's, I think there's a motion in place that I think I've heard before, and it, and just like the one a few weeks ago, it said something about a town administrator making a recommendation.
Oh, so, you know, that, it does not, it does not have to be any one person. You know, my idea is working with the town administrators and the chief, that we would, you know, I certainly know a number of lawyers who have conducted these hearings over the 25 years that I've done this type of work, and we would come back with someone who we think is appropriate for the board's consideration.
You're able to do that, then?
Yes, I am.
Thoughts?
I mean, I know what the motion was before. I'm in agreement that they're, at this stage, with the facts coming out as they have in terms of circumstances, that I would be, I vote in favor of an independent hearing officer, but I would specify Labor Council Kevin Feely as the person who would designate the person. I would be comfortable with that. In terms of transparency and fairness to the employee, I would feel more comfortable with that.
I have no issue with that. I'm going to ask Kevin for the person. If the board designated me, I'm going to go to Kevin and say what he wants to do.
And Kevin, if you were to do that, it would be a function of, obviously, the qualifications of the individual, but also, to me, what would be important is availability as well.
Right.
I think we've heard from the chief that it's important to continue to move this process along, so hopefully you can find someone who is suitable and available for us.
Yes. And typically, what I would, the way I would handle it is, I would talk to the counsel for the employee in question, get a sense of when that person thinks it would be that he or she would be ready to move forward with the hearing, and then make sure that the hearing officer in question can comply with that schedule.
And just in abundance of caution, my part, I think I mentioned to Kevin, I would prefer to have somebody not affiliated with this immediate area, so that there's no question in terms of the fairness that this employee gets in a hearing.
Yeah, we'll have no problem with that, coming up with a good person.
Okay. Do we want to take questions or comments from the audience before making a motion? Or counsel, do you have any concern about us doing that?
Well, as far as questions or comments from the audience, when, if we're talking about process, I don't have any legal issues. If we're going to talk about an individual, then yes, I would have, I would have a problem with that, and I would strongly suggest there not be any comments or questions about any one of your employees.
Sure. Do we want to see? I suspect these folks are not here for the Board of Health budget, Bruce.
I'll defer to you, Mary, if you have some.
Is there anyone from the audience who wishes to make a comment before we make a motion? I move that the board, in accordance with Chapter 31, Section 41 of the General Laws, authorize the appointment of a hearing officer for the purpose of hearing a discipline case involving Sergeant Chris Phillips, and further authorize that the hearing officer submit both findings of fact and a recommendation as to whether or not just cause exists to impose discipline on Sergeant Phillips. I further move that Attorney Kevin Feely provide the board with the name of an appropriate hearing officer in advance of our next meeting. I would further ask that Attorney, further move that Attorney Feely, working with Chief Olson, develop a letter of charges to review with the board at our next meeting as well.
My only question is, Kevin, does that give you enough time?
Yes, it does.
Come up with, in terms of the process, would it involve you actually reaching out to one or several people, depending on their availability or interest? Is that how it would work?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Now, I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
I miss you.
Yep. Question from the public.
Okay.
Sorry, Carol?
List of charges meaning what? Charges that, of the pro-hearing officer, of the charges against the person?
The list of charges would be the charges that the chief is bringing forward for consideration in the disciplinary hearing. And again, those charges will be part of an executive session.
Okay. Going to drop back to questions from the public regarding items not on the agenda. Our lawyers left, so we have a little more disposable time. Stand to be recognized, sir. Name and address. Podium?
Mark Plouffe, 225 Old Derby Street. Mr. Feely, this is to notify you of clear and convincing violation of the above reference of criminal law regarding the employment of position of town engineer. Created, underextended.
This is not the time and place for that, Mr. Plouffe. If you've got a complaint against an employee.
I didn't mention a name. I mentioned a position.
Put it in writing. Submit it to Mr. Alexiades. We'll deal with it appropriately.
Here you go. This is coffee for you, sir.
Great.
And you?
Thank you.
And you?
Thank you, Mr. Plouffe. Mr. Plouffe, it'll become part of the public record. Anybody who's interested in seeing it can. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay. In that case, let's move on to.
Budget hearings.
Budget hearings.
About what?
I guess they weren't all here for the budget.
I don't even know what the hell is that. Is this anything about the town engineer?
I don't know.
Was that John Riley, the one? Mustache? Is John Riley here?
He's got a mustache.
Oh, no, I haven't seen him in a long time, so I haven't seen him. I know, but I, it took me a minute. I was thinking he was somebody else, and no, it's a bad thing. I'm just like, I thought it was John Riley.
Okay, Board of Health. Step up.
All right. So, as you know, we weren't able to get to just a couple budgets last year in December. And wrapping up your budget presentation for this year are your final two budgets, the, towards the school budget, the Board of Health and Bearcove Park. The Board of Health budget appears on page 100 in a summary fashion. It'll tell you that Board of Health requested $323,556, and they also requested additional $3,450, which I'll let Bruce detail. I've recommended that addition for a total budget of $327,006. It represents an actual $3,069 decrease year-over-year and a negative 0.93 percent decrease year-over-year, primarily due to personnel changes.
Okay. In reviewing the budget, I came up with about five different categories that we could use some increases in. Repair and maintenance of our vehicle, which is now seven years old, anticipating that we're going to be needing to pay for repairs, tires, that kind of thing down the road, where it's not covered under warranty anymore. And that's for $500. Our second request would be for repair and maintenance contract with Bay Copy to maintain the new copy machine that we got, and that's right to the dollar of $450. Meetings and seminars, I've asked for an increase of $1,000, and primarily that money is going to pay for our new health agent to get certified as a soil evaluator, which is necessary since she will be going out with witnessing perk tests and soil tests, and she needs to be on the same level of expertise as the engineer who may be out on the site, who is also a soil evaluator. Our immunization clinic, as you probably are aware, that drugstores and doctors and are all giving out flu shots and encouraging people to get flu shots. However, we ran into a problem this year, which we were not expecting. We received 35 doses of vaccine from the state compared to 1,500, which we normally get. So what that did was, we basically did not hold any clinics. We did town employees and the elderly at some of our housing sites and homebound individuals. And what we would like to do is put an additional $1,000 into the vaccine category of immunization clinic, so that we're able to continue having our town employees immunized for the flu. I think it's a good bargain for the town. When you do get the flu and you're out a week or two, certainly paying about $14 for a shot is not, it's a bargain. So that, we'd like to do that. We may be able to, with that extra $1,000, have at least one open clinic for townspeople. We had a lot of the seniors calling us, coming down to the office, because they're much more comfortable with having it done by us, and Kathy Crowley, our public health nurse. And we want to make sure that we can offer that service. They don't feel comfortable going into a pharmacy or setting up an appointment with their doctor, so that's what we're asking for there. And then finally, underwater testing, I'm just trying to make a small adjustment. We are required to test all of the neighborhood beaches in town, for instance, like Bel Air or North Beach, or some of the beaches out on Seal Cove and Martin's Cove, as part of a state law. So what we have done is we've offset the cost of doing those tests by passing the cost of those tests onto a permit, which they need from us. Right now, that permit is about $300 for a season. We were paying about $27 per test. We do it once a week for 10 weeks during the summertime. If a beach fails testing, we have to go back and retest. So what we're faced with now is that the laboratory, I checked with them, and their price has gone up to about $34 per test. So we'd like to just fill that gap in and be able to maintain the budget that way.
Questions from my colleagues.
So Bruce, last year, I seem to remember that we increased the number of sanitary hours because of, in particular, a lot of the fog, the fat soil and grease inspections and things. I noticed that this next year, the budget's a little bit down from 16. Can, that's good news, but I was just wondering, what's your experience been this year that is causing you to reduce it for 17?
Well, the reduction is basically our health agent has moved on.
Okay.
So we're starting with a new person at the bottom step.
Okay.
And that's where you see that savings.
And how are you, how would, you know, again, a big effort and a great effort in the last couple of years with the FOG program, particularly getting the restaurants to comply, what's your experience been this year?
Pretty, pretty good. I mean, we've had a lot of cooperation from the sewer department, Steve Dempsey and Randy. We have a couple out there that, since I've been back, I've seen is, needs a little more attention because it's not working at a couple of places, but we know who they are. The sewer department has camered the lines, and it's our, we have sent out letters to these places and informed them that if they don't maintain a high degree of maintenance, then we will have to take action against them. So that's where we are with that. But all in all, I think what they're getting in the sewer lines has greatly reduced since we've been monitoring them, especially downtown.
Thank you.
Bruce?
Oh, my gosh. This is Ian. I just don't want to miss an opportunity, first of all, to, I know the budget is down, I guess we're saying, but yet your responsibilities and your activities seem to be going up. And I say that in particular with the incredible support that your department, you and Kathy and the whole department have given to the Subs Abuse Coalition that we've formed in Hingham. And we wouldn't be able to have got to the point we are now with, not only with your expertise, but your assistance in many, many levels. So we're just so appreciative of what you guys do. In your immunization program, when you were saying, you were saying that you need $1,000, and that would, what, expand it to what? Could you tell us again?
Basically, it would make sure that we got all of the seniors and offer a open clinic for townspeople who would be able to take advantage of that. Most of those immunizations, especially when people are on Medicare, we go, and insurance, we go and for reimbursement from those, from Medicare and from insurance companies. So it's kind of a.
Also town employees, though?
Also town employees, yes. Anybody that we, do, we ask for that. If not, then obviously, we're not going to refuse giving them the immunization, but we try to recover as much as we can from those people that attend or get our immunization.
In terms of the seniors, is there a location that you specifically have for them? And how do you let them know about its availability? And maybe, is there a certain time of the year, or is it all year round?
No, it's, well, we continue immunizing people until we run out of vaccine. We do have a flu hotline, which is, we've been encouraging people to call over the years, which is updated frequently during the flu season. What was the other part you?
I just said, how do you notify them?
Oh, the senior location. Yeah, the senior locations. We work with, obviously, Thax Apart and Lincoln Apartments, and we work with the Senior Center as far as getting the message out, along with postings on the webpage and just people calling. They're all pretty used to just calling us and asking us, when have you got your vaccine in, and is it available? So what we do, and what we try to do to get everybody done is, this year, what we did is, everybody needs an appointment. They can call Kathy, set up an appointment, come down, get it, and that's done, too. Because a lot of these people don't like to go out in the dark. A lot of them, they have handicap issues that Kathy can go actually out to the house and give them their immunization. So all in all, we, they know who we are, and they know how to get in contact with us.
Hopefully, it's word of mouth, too. But I'm thinking maybe if you, at some point, you know, you're a public service announcement or something where you're letting folks, because there might be some people that are new to the locations where the seniors live or the town, and they're not aware of it, and they don't get it by word of mouth, it would be, I think it would be a great service if we could somehow advertise the availability.
You can certainly go into that.
Thank you.
You good?
I am.
Just a quick follow-up on the soil evaluator. For the benefit of the audience and myself, is this work being done in conjunction with upgrading existing septic systems or the installation of new ones?
Both.
Okay.
It's basically a course in geology, which has been used by most of the United States, all the other states. And Massachusetts adopted it in 1995. So it's a great course. It goes on for about five weeks. It talks about what to look for in the soils and to determine different things, such as water table. Because if we're out during a low water table, there are ways to figure out where that water table gets adjusted during the wet season. So we're able to do that. And.
So the characteristic, they're trained in identifying the characteristics of the soil which drive the design of the system?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And it's much more accurate than what we were doing, plus that the description of the soils that we use is universal. So if, you know, California wants to look at the soils, they will be able to understand the language that we're using, because it's the same. because it's the same language itself.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much, Kirk. Anything you want to add or?
No.
I think Bruce covered it pretty good.
You did a fabulous job.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Happy New Year to both you guys, Kirk.
Thank you, same to you.
Good luck.
All right, well, your next budget is the Bear Cove Park Committee. And they appear on page 40 of your budget. And I see our Bear Cove Park Committee Chairman here in the audience. It's a little bit of a straightforward budget.
Good evening.
Hi Ted.
Hi there. How are you?
Hey Ted.
So in summary, the Bear Cove Park Committee had a budget of, a request of $25,061. It matched, it was, no additional increases, $65 decrease year over year, negative .26%. Pretty stable budget year over year. I know that we talked about some increases to budgets to deal with Bear Cove Park, but they're all being deployed in other budgets at this moment.
You know, I can't add too much. It's probably the thriftiest budget that you have to review. But we do, we go a long way with that $25,000, you know. Most of it is salary, as you know, for our fantastic park ranger, Scott McMillan. And the rest of it is spent on maintaining the park, buying doggy bags, you know, miscellaneous patches to paving if needed and fuel for the vehicle that we've, and the mower. Last year, actually, we had to operate pretty efficiently in order to pay for a new mower deck, which gave out during the year. And that was a $5,000 expense that was unexpected. We also had some new tires to pay for on that and I think some gearing gave out, but it's functional now. The DPW took care of it for us. You know, the DPW and the tree department do help us out in the park quite a bit, keep the place as beautiful as it is. I think I covered most of it.
Questions from my colleagues.
I just have, Ted or Ted? Could you maybe just elaborate on where the other monies you said that's going to be affecting Bear Cove?
Sure, if you remember in the discussion of the Animal Control Department and in the Police Department, we asked for additional resources in both those areas to provide more enforcement.
And maybe just tell the folks in what regard were the additional?
So the, with additional hours were in the Animal Control Officer to provide for overtime and provide for potential weekend hours. And I believe some resources within the police budget to allocate for enforcement. And this is primarily the discussions you were having in the fall about unleashed dogs within the park.
So, and that's good. I remember we, that those things were in play. In terms of our park ranger, is he at the same hours that he was before?
Yeah, there has been no change in his hours.
Is there any discussion about increasing his hours to assist the Animal Control Officer? Or, you know, in terms of just visibility? Because otherwise, I mean, I know we're going to have some police enforcement slash visibility, but I just...
I thought the feeling was that they did not want the ranger to cross over into law enforcement or into policing. It was not what his job description or role was and it would put him potentially into an awkward spot.
Well, I understand that. I'm saying, but another set of eyes in the area is some time of a deterrent, not necessarily for enforcement, but just, I mean, he has a function there as it is and I'm sure his presence is valuable in many ways. I'd like to see...
It is.
His hours increased at least...
There's an, he's a retired firefighter, so there's a limit on his hours.
Well, that's why I was wondering.
That's where we are, so we're not increasing his hours anymore. We could add, we could add another person in the park. But I think that's why, taking advice from the chief, he felt that that, those people would be better in the Animal Control Department. So we added, I think, about $6,000. I don't have the exact number. I think, I think we had about $6,000 of salary in that budget.
No, that, Ted, I understand. I was, in the back of my mind, I was thinking there may be an issue, but I, obviously, a good explanation as to why.
Yeah, I know what we would, if...
Well, I mean, that's, that's the other thing is, maybe that's something we'll think about, depending on what happens in the next six months or whatever, in terms of how we look at Bear Cove. It's always an option, it's something to...
Yeah, even today, just to let you know, give you a little status update. You know, there's still challenges down there. And there's actually a dog missing in the park tonight.
Yes, also.
Yeah. That dog ran off from its owner this afternoon and hasn't been found. So these things happen.
Hopefully, they find it.
Good thing it's not too cold out there.
That's right, two nights ago.
You know, I would just, having had the privilege of serving as a member of the Bear Cove Park Committee, this is, I mean, all our committees are working committees. This is a working committee in a very different way. And I don't think this $25,000 budget is indicative of the number of volunteer hours that Ted and other members of the committee put into this. And Bear Cove's a special place. You know, you mentioned the DPW and the Police Department, Animal Control. Certainly, they play a role, but the nine volunteers that serve on the committee do as well. And I know it's been a challenging year. And I know that our request to take six months and get some data at times is not easy for all of you. And I understand that you are still the front line for a lot of very different opinions about things. And I would just thank you and ask you to pass our thanks on to the committee. Our intention is, you know, after that six months, to see where we are and what we need to do. And as Ted mentioned, one of the reasons why he is recommending, and I think, while we haven't voted, we were all inclined to support the idea of extra hours, is that regardless of how those, whether the same regulations stay in place or the regulations are monitored, that enforcement presence needs to be there. So we understand that we need to give you some additional tools. And again, I thank you for your patience and I thank you for your dedication to the, to the park and to the town.
That's great. Thank you, Mary, for recognizing the committee, because I will say that each one of the committee members is very active in their own way.
Yes.
And each one of them adds something a little different to the mix.
You know, on a committee, we want, we want different voices. I mean, if we all sort of had the same voice, that wouldn't be good. And we have expertise in different areas and different constituencies represented. And again, as a group, we appreciate also the way that you go about your work. I mean, you guys, you guys can disagree without being disagreeable. And I think that's, that's, that's really an art. And so again, appreciate it.
That's good. Well, you know, we, another challenge to us is, you know, just being on the lookout for encroachment on our beautiful park, you know, by development and, you know, other types of any outside influences, you know, graffiti, pollution and that sort of thing. So I think that's really what we're taking on as our challenge now, is to protect that area of critical environmental concern. And we should continue to mention that in the conversation.
Absolutely.
So...
Just pointing out one other thing is, in terms of the tools that we're, that we're trying to get to you, a lot of that was brought to light in the meetings and the, I think Mary was alluding to it, the meetings we've had over the last few months and back, maybe six months or so. I think everybody understood, if they didn't already, that the use of the park is growing exponentially in terms of activity. And so, you know, to me at that time and now and even in the future, I think that we need to keep looking at ways to get you folks resources to help you do your job because you guys are a great asset to the town, as Mary said.
That's great. Thank you, Paul.
I think my colleagues have covered the ground pretty well, so I don't want to...
Thank you.
...beat the bush any further. I do thank you and it's, it's very heartening to hear that you enjoy working with the colleagues that sit on your committee. That's a challenge for us in the appointment process, to find the right fit and the right people. And sometimes there's a pressure to kind of just place people in. And we're trying to do this so that we maximize the effectiveness of the town committees. And it's good to hear that you guys are working well together. You have a good ranger too.
Yes, we do.
Oh, yeah.
Helps a lot.
But it is good to hear that. So thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ted.
Good night, thank you.
Okay. At this point in the evening, we're going to turn next to a discussion and vote of operating budget. And then we have some possible votes and then we're going to adjourn. So...
I had made a request to Ted and Betty that we, I know oftentimes the selectmen vote the budgets, the municipal budgets, the first week in January. I'm, I'm going to suggest that we wait until the end of the month to vote them. And I'm making that suggestion for a couple of reasons. First of all, we're going to have a clearer picture of a couple of budget variables at the end of the month. We'll get our local receipt number, we'll get our motor vehicle excise, which is 90% of our local receipts. Sometimes we get a preliminary look at the budget, the governor's budget, which gives us an idea of state aid. We often, we start the process with Plymouth County to understand what our group insurance might be. And then lastly, we're not really seeing the school budget. I think tonight is the first night the school committee is beginning to take it up. So, you know, in light of the fact that we are showing a deficit and we have many worthy requests, some of which have been recommended, others that haven't, I'd like to postpone our vote, which by the way, will not hold up the advisory committee, but just for a couple of weeks until we all have the benefit of some better information. I just feel like I will be able to make better choices at that time than I would tonight.
So I'm good to you?
I'm always willing to accommodate my colleagues to the extent I can. The only question I have is, because I didn't, I knew we may not be voting them tonight, at least that's where, I didn't know the exact reason why, per your request. In terms of advisory, they're scheduling still after us?
So the, they're going to vote all the budgets after you and they would vote them probably the first week in February or subsequent to that. And I have spoken with Tom Piles and he's Chair Advisory. I think that would be one of the compelling reasons not to delay your votes if they felt that that was going to delay their process and he indicated that's not a problem for them. So that's compelling. And then I think the other two reasons are, the governor's budget, I think, is potential to be a little different this year. It's, you know, the, so that's one aspect that I'd like to get a handle on. Revenues for the state have changed and so we don't know where they're going to come in exactly. But motor vehicle is one that could be potentially a game changer for us on a positive sense. We're seeing off the record sales for motor vehicles during calendar 15. That'll flow into that number that we'll get at the end of January. So, you know, most of the years, I can tell you that that number's not going to change that month. And waiting a month is only going to delay the process. But there are some years where there could be some substantial changes. And I think this is one of those years where you might see some numbers and what would be the point of voting a budget the first week of January that three weeks later, you now have to reopen to give back to people that you have some extra resources? Because I know you've looked at some budgets that you'd like to add some things to.
Just a question. And I, I'm agreeable to it, just, but in terms of the, you said the governor's budget. Are you saying that somehow we're going to get some feedback regarding his?
Well, the budget will be released, their budget's the third week of, usually it's the MMA Conference, 22nd or so of January. So we'll have that number. As soon as the budget, the governor's budget comes out, then we got a pretty good sense of where we're going to be state aid wise.
Okay.
And I think it would be worthwhile to wait for this governor's budget this year.
And I would also add, you know, I think, I've noticed things in the paper recently about health insurance for corporations and how this seems to be a year where, you know, we've had a couple of years of modest increases, but in the private sector, there are bigger increases this year. So, you know, we've, we've had the benefit of three or four years of little, little if any growth in health insurance rates. Now, we have 10% forecasted, so, you know, in past years, it's been 1%, 2%. I think we'll have a, maybe a better idea at the end of the month. And again, that's about $7 million?
Yeah, so we're talking, you know, that's really how we've balanced the budget for the last several years with, you know, just great healthcare results. Actually, it's been zeros up until last year for about four years in a row. And so that's not likely to happen this year. And the numbers are trending to higher increases. I don't think we'll hit the 10% threshold, but, you know, you're going to need every one of those dollars. So I think waiting until the end of January would be prudent too.
No, and I think we have consensus that will defer on that issue. Let's take up some votes then before we sign off tonight. We have the police here and we have two votes as it relates to the use of Narcan. Chief, is there anything you want to add to what we're being asked to sign off on or?
No, I just wanted to say that I think of everyone's cooperation and that's kind of what I'm saying. It's so loud and I don't, you know.
That's why I have a deputy.
If you're not 12 inches from that microphone, they're not hearing you at home. That's what they tell me.
They know I scream and they don't...
That's what they tell me at the production studio.
No, I just, I would just like to thank the boards. I know it's a little bit unusual where you come into an existing contract and ask for an amendment to it. I think the idea of implementing Narcan is something that's a life-saving process. And to get the cooperation of the boards and the unions to do this, I think, was really critical. And I think we had it in the Cruises, but seven days. And we actually were able to use it on an 18-year-old and revive him. So I think this has already paid itself off immensely.
Awesome. Great.
So I'd obviously thank the cooperation of you folks and the unions because this, we're obviously willing and obviously has benefits, but it's good to have everybody cooperating, working together.
Yep. And so I don't say we're looking forward to using it again, but we're glad we're prepared.
Right. That's the purpose, yeah.
You guys are the tip of the spear, so having the working tools is important. Mary, is there anything you want to add or?
No.
Rate a vote.
I'll make a motion to sign an amendment to the New England Police Benevolent Association, AFL-CIO, regarding the use of Narcan.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to sign amendment to the Hingham Superior Officers Union and CLP Local 405 regarding the use of Narcan.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Selectment Town Administrator reports. Ted?
Oh, we've got one more vote, I think, right? Didn't we?
Yeah.
We missed this one?
The Independent Hearing Officer.
Correct.
At the very bottom.
Okay.
Oh, and actually, we have two votes.
Oh. I'll make a motion to appoint Leah Godfrey to the Cultural Council to fill an unexpired term ending June 30th, 2018.
You know, we, we met Leah in the Talent Bank. Is she, have we reached out to her that she's...
I spoke to her.
Interested and willing to serve?
Yes.
Okay.
We just, do we just lose, is that where we're falling in?
Somebody resigned.
Just recently, right? Yeah.
We really have to start filling these spots.
And I think this one is time-sensitive because of the Cultural Council grant process, so I'll second the motion.
Discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Welcome Leah. Leah, that's great.
And actually, we have, we have, I think, according to this, we have a second opening on the Cultural Council and I see, we received a Talent Bank application this afternoon. So I'm, I'm wondering if, if, I'd make a motion that we appoint Sonia Steele to the Cultural Council to fill...
Can we do that?
To fill an open term.
Can we do that?
Expiring 2018.
Expiring 2018. Thank you, Betty.
So we can do that even, I mean, we have to, we don't have to have it listed on the...
Nope.
Okay.
I think this came in this afternoon.
Yeah, no, I mean, blame me, I'm...
I saw the resume, she looked, I don't know the lady, but she looks pretty good.
Yeah, I mean, I, I haven't seen it. This isn't...
You have a vote to fill the Cultural Council.
Yeah, so we could fill it too. I, I don't, I don't know much about her, but I, I'll sense that she has an interest and you folks are okay with it? I guess I'll be fine with two.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome, Ms. Steele.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. We have a final vote here to classify and designate the position of Independent Hearing Officer as a special municipal employee position under 268A. I wasn't here when the vote was taken. I'm going to assume that something happened, so...
Well, we, I mean, I'd probably... Well, we, I mean, I'd probably, explanation would be, would be helpful.
So this is the hearing officer that Kevin Feely recommended for the Matt Hershey case.
Oh, that's what I thought.
And Jim Lampke serves as Town Counsel at Hall, and Jim felt that there are some cross issues with Hingham that he would want that as designation. Kevin thought it was appropriate. So I'm passing it on to you.
Okay.
We, Jim's agreed to handle the hearing and move forward expositively. And I believe Kevin and Jim have worked before in the past, is what Kevin had told me. Okay. Do I have a motion to that effect?
Make a motion to classify and designate the position of Independent Hearing Officer as a special municipal employee position under GL Section 268A.
I'm going to second that, but could I just, just one other question? So, are we required to designate the person as an employer, and we're doing that?
Position.
The position, not the employee. Right? It's the position, not the employee.
Is it, is it just for this one instance, or are we doing that? I just don't understand. We're doing it now, after we appointed him, but I'm just trying to figure out, is it required under statute?
The reason we're doing it is because Mr. Lampke requested it of us, because as an attorney, he indicated that he needed that coverage. Kevin Feely indicated that that was appropriate, given the fact that he does work for the Town of Hall, and occasionally, he's involved in issues such as Aquarian or other things, because Town of Hall and Hingham work together, like Regional Dispatch. So he asked to review an agreement for Hall as part of their participation in a regional effort, and he wanted that protection. Kevin felt it was appropriate, and I don't think it has any other impact other than that.
Good. I just want to make sure I understood it, that's all.
Okay. I think there's been a motion made. I think you need...
Second.
Oh, you've seconded it.
Well, I am now, if I didn't.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We now are done with the votes. So we'll go to the Town Administrator Selectment Reports. Ted, anything you want to add? Just want to remind everybody that we're moving close to warrant deadline of January 20th, and we're, you know, quite busy in the office as we, you know, start to field petition articles from folks that want to come in and talk to us. I know Betty's started to field a few, and we'll be passing everything on to you as soon as we wrap all that package up. Betty, anything you want to chip in?
For one, this week is going to be very busy meeting.
Okay. Take my Red Bull ahead of time?
You know, I would just add, to build up what Ted said about warrant articles coming in, you know, this, it's going to start to be getting very busy with a lot of different meetings. And I would encourage people to check the events calendar for committee hearings, advisory committee meetings, selectmen hearings. And I also know for some people, it's often difficult to get to a meeting, especially people who perhaps, you know, work, if you work in Boston, it's, it can be difficult to get to the meetings. I would encourage people, if they want to have their voice heard on a matter, to go to the committee page. Typically, there's an email contact information. I think all of our committees do a great job at reading correspondence from citizens. So I would encourage people to engage in the process in whatever way you can as we lead up to town meeting.
Just briefly, I would wish everybody a happy new year. I hope you had a wonderful Christmas and holiday season with your family, and we'll do our best in this new year to do, and provide our dutiful service to you and through this budget process and beyond, and look forward to it.
Great. I don't have anything to add, other than I got my tax bill. And I'm very sensitive to how the people's money is spent. And I thank the men and women that work in the town and serve on these various committees as we go through this budget process, because nothing's taken for granted here. And I appreciate the support of the Hingham taxpayers and residents here. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, and good night to you.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Good night.
All right.
Good night.